Bond, it would be through the Delphi redevelopment commission. So they, you know, with the expansion and development that is expected, there would be ample allocation of the group for the excess, assessed value to be able to service that bond. So it would be through the Delphi redevelopment commission, not through the city. The city can back a bond if necessary, but the, the TIP is expected to be able to service the bond.
We would be using the bond to get the money.
Excuse me?
Potentially, this is a TIP back that's done because of the front loaded, right? We don't have the money right now, but we will have it. So, so the city can do, can support that TIP bond again. Precedent is there, that's how lots of, yeah, how TIPs begin and begin. So, so this is an extraordinarily important area for the city's development. That would be to the west, obviously, we can't go too far with the quarry and the city property. To the south, you know, essentially, we want to be reserved for some housing potentially. And so this area was already has the Andersons there, and 218 and the Hooters Hartland and the rail. It's a vitally important corridor for us to potentially add industrial expansion.
And then we'd also add that, you know, to the south, once you get past the city limits, then of course you're in the county TIP and some of the, some of the city properties within the county, Indiana Packers Corporation, TIP area. And, you know, we're not, we're not proposing certainly to expand the Delphi redevelopment commission to that area because any expansion would go through the county redevelopment commission. So to the, to the northwest is all USA property and will be part of their mining expansion over time. And then we have the river, which kind of recludes us from expanding either to the, to the west and certainly to the north area. So this northeast area is about the only, you know, area for possible expansion for the city.
That area, clear Rockfield, which has been identified by economic development for coming years anyway as development potential up there. We even had an option at one time, economic development had an option at one time. Taken out on about 600 acres that was just west of Rockfield, ordered right on. And it, they couldn't get enough power, so then we lost the steel plant that wanted to come in there.
That is the other piece of this, the county RNC, Carroll White RNC. Jake, can you speak to what they're doing?
Yeah, so they will be, they're upgrading Walvest Valley in cooperation with Carroll White RNC. Is upgrading this substation there just west of the Andersons. And so just any industrial development, this conversation that we've had, even whether it's with private corporations or with the government, they see a value in adding capacity there and they will. So any movement we have towards a bondable infrastructure through TIP is going to help that area continue to build capacity. And so there are multiple agencies working in this area on the power side, obviously to the municipality with the utilities and gas as well, working with NIPSCO. So, yeah, there's a lot of partners at the table for this area. And I think to the fruits of you guys 25 years ago, we're actually starting to see some really good infrastructure investments and private investment in that area.
What's your opinion on turn that over to the city? What would that take away from you?
It, it wouldn't take away from me. I think, I think as far as economic development's concerned, TIP-ing that area is, is vital, whether it's the county or the city, I think is what we're discussing now. But I think with, with the city's infrastructure in the ground, I would find it advantageous for the redevelopment commission to have control over those TIP dollars to reinvest into the infrastructure if it gets put in the ground. It's viable for the county as well. It's still a lucrative TIP area for the county as well. But then they don't control the infrastructure, they don't own any infrastructure. So that's where I think this would be. So I probably, I mean, is that a fair enough answer, I guess? I would support the Delphi TIP, taking, taking this for part of redevelopment. I should just support the infrastructure on the ground at this point.
Do you have a industry that's currently looking there?
Yes, sir.
Is it having water and sewer there is the determining factor of getting them there?
Yes.
Not, not heavy.
It's, it won't be a class two.
Yeah, it's not heavy water.
As it sits now, it would be.
Everybody has a habit.
But it's not food processing or something that takes millions of gallons.
But it takes more than well.
I mean, they expect.
Fire suppression.
They expect city services. That's, that's just the market currently, right? You don't, a corporation really not going to want to make, build their own well when you have city services. So that's an extension of industrial development or city services.
And as Jake was alluding, fire suppression is one of the big, biggest demands on a property of this sort, which isn't a class two user, but they, they still, for insurance purposes, have to be able to, to show that they have the capacity for fire suppression.
And Andersons has indicated that they would like municipal service as well. They've made that very clear for their current site, that that would help them. So there's, there's more to the iceberg per se, but yeah. The user out there currently would like to see it, I think, for us to bring an adequate investment to that site, having, having utilities is going to be a must.
Do the Andersons have city water now?
They have.
Their fire hydrants is, I guess, the biggest thing on the water.
Yeah, I think their hydrants are, are city. But they, they're on a septic system and they would certainly like to have, you know, city sewer and city water for the processes that they're presently contemplating. So they, they've been at the table as we've had these discussions and they are requesting that, you know, that the city provide services out to that area. So hence the redevelopment, the Delphi redevelopment commission's request for.
And hence the inclusion of the, the expansion of the TIP.
If we don't, I'm just being a thought question here. If we decided not to do that with you guys, you still provide services out that way? If we got.
Obviously, we would prefer to have this under the Delphi redevelopment commission. There will be, as you know, we're looking at expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. That will mostly benefit Indiana Packers Corporation and new development to the south. So it's very likely that the county RDC will have, you know, a significant role to play in that. And so there, and any other projects that are going on elsewhere in the county, that would be potentials for the county RDC. So I won't say that they'll have their hands full, but, you know, they will have a lot on their plate as we move forward with, with wastewater treatment plant expansion. And that is well in the works and will, you know, certainly be having those discussions throughout the best of this year, probably into the first part of 2023. But that will give us the expansion that, that frankly Jake needs in order to bring more industry into the entire area. This expansion to the northeast is not a heavy wastewater customer and well within, you know, what the city can provide. And certainly by using the Delphi TIP, it does give us the ability to create more capture and invest in other projects, both within the city limits and in this, this northeast area.
This will have no effect on the townspeople, that's the ones that are calling in saying they're not in favor.
Actually, it will help the townspeople because it gives us more ratepayers to pay for the water that will be pumping, you know, to, to the industry in this area. So that's the same for, for water and for wastewater. So there will be more, more meters, if you will, that will, you know, help to, to pay for.
Any existing homes or area out there that are bought one business that they're storage units?
If they wish to be added to.
They won't be forced?
They won't be forced to, but, you know, if they wish to be added. And the other thing too is that the Amity Park, which now is on well and septic, you know, that provide water and wastewater. So that if they want to expand, add more fields, then they would have capacity as well.
Add more fields right there or, I'm sorry, right there where the park is, add one, yes?
I understand that they're negotiating with the state to get more land. And as that is, if that were to happen, then obviously they would want more fields and.
Probably on the west side of the old Kierkegaard.
Right, yeah.
I thought that would happen sooner or later. Like I said, I'm just, I'm the people in word for this area, so they may call me.
We're happy to answer those questions. Appreciate your, your following up on them.
And so Mr. Johnson has seen the resolution that we would request from you. And then we have exhibits A and B to include in, into that resolution that the RDC is already prepared and passed a declaratory resolution on the redevelopment area, on that development area. So that, we have that, we, we could ask for your vote today. We don't have, have to have that our schedule allows for us to come, come back again after considering.
Ted just passed it out to us, I have to have this in here, not read this.
Right, so. So he, he's, Ted has had the resolution and made a couple minor changes to fit your format for your signatures. And he, in the email, has reviewed it and, and, and drop it over here.
Drop. Will this exclusively be considered a Delphi TIP and Delphi RDC? Or are you planning a joint Delphi and Carroll County RDC project? We alluded to it some, but I didn't know exactly what, you know, the actual.
Yeah, because this is, this plan has a Delphi redevelopment commission. Expansion of the commercial TIP within the city of Delphi. There are a few Delphi parcels that are in this expansion area. And then we could, you know, request the county's permission to add the county parcels to the Delphi redevelopment to help the northeast allocation area.
Any other comments or questions, Dale?
I have a question. How, on the potential industry, how much gallonage of water per month are they requiring?
We're currently looking at supply chain distribution for this, for this specific site. At least the inquiries we have, so I can get a number of a relative ballpark. But, yeah, I don't have a number right now.
So we're looking, the current people that we've been in discussion with, they're minimal water users. So it's not an, it's not a factory or, or a food processing plant that requires, required water of any amount, so.
Okay, so they haven't indicated how much they would require.
No, but it's, I mean, it's minor for these kinds of industries.
Okay, and as far as the expansion of infrastructure and running city infrastructure from point A to that location, do you have an estimate on how much that would be?
I don't know that we have the engineering estimates yet.
It would be probably a little reckless to get a, we have a ballpark number on based on footage and size, but yeah, we, it, I think that my first goal was to figure out if the tax revenue from the new investment is going to be able to pay for the pipes.
Yeah.
So if it's not on the ratepayers, it's not on the, it'll be on the, the, the investment to pay that, that bond. So we're showing at this point that whatever investment goes there, if something does, it will cover the, the cost, again, infrastructure there.
So if you don't know the cost, how can you figure out if it'll cover or not?
Well, because the, if the potential size of the investment gives a number, so the math adds up to what the new assessed value would be. And then that gives the redevelopment commission the ability to bond up until that amount of new assessed value. So that new assessed value, it is a, is far exceeding of any infrastructure that would go there, if that makes sense. So if we're ballparking estimates, we, the, the new investment would have no problem with the infrastructure, if that answers your question.
Really? Good, okay.
Yeah, so I think everything's really at an estimate at this point. Trying to figure out what the pipes in the ground would cost. We haven't got those lined up yet. What we're trying to do right now is figure out if there's new investment in the area, what it looks like, how much, how long, how big. And then we can kind of pick our numbers based upon how big a pipe is. So this, the allocation area in general is just to allow us to be able to finance it if, if the numbers work. There are projects that don't fund that, right? So the project's not big enough to pay the two miles of pipe to it. And so we can't, we can't borrow on that future assessed value.
So how do you know that when you don't know how much it's going to cost to get it there in the first place? That's confusing to me. I don't go buy a house if I don't figure out how I'm not going to get, or how I'm going to get stuff to it.
So I'll give you an example. I think if it's fine to go through a little exercise here. So if we've got a hundred thousand square foot facility, that its assessed value is $50 million, then we can essentially bond, if you're understanding how TIP works, you can bond that assessed value on a yearly basis. So the infrastructure at this point, getting it from where it's at to that location, is going to far, be far less than that potential investment could be. So if the company comes back and says, we're only going to invest X, and I say, the assessed value will not pay for that infrastructure bond, then, then it would be pointless, we wouldn't be able to borrow the money. So I think the numbers we're working with now, to hopefully answer your question, is that the investment far exceeds the value of the infrastructure in this particular circumstance.
We're also looking, the expansion of, of the TIP is a foundational, right? It's part of the foundation we're building for the future, right? We, we have TIPs, we're expanding the TIPs. So the nuances of, of this or that is, this is what we're doing, is building the foundation to have it for, for the future discussions that. And that's what's by the import, you know? I mean, so we, we have to, the, the state gave us the capability of, of tips for communities like ours who can't, who can't compete like West Lockhead or Lockland, right? So they don't need, they generally don't need, they have, they have resources to do it in other ways. So that's, that's what we're looking at, is the, we're building the foundation of the house for the future with this, with this TIP expansion.
Do you have a TIP district that's against this already or?
Yes, the Delphi commercial TIP is largely the, the downtown end commercial properties. So the extension would be along East Main Street to Hooters Hartland and then into, you know, all city property. So it would be similar to, you know, expansions that were done, I think, in the, the residential TIP areas that were done within the county, where roads were used as the nexus to, you know, provide the connection to the, to, you know, county RDC. And that's similar to what we are doing here with the city redevelopment commission using East Main and State Road 25 as the nexus to.
We're, we're going to get the right of ways to put this out that way if that building will be came in and was to be.
I, I can answer that. So we are working with the Andersons on the easement and the size and where it's going to go. And they've been really gracious and.
So, yeah, I, I just didn't want residents to have a nerve or the farmers out that way. You know, although the plant or artists, because they, they lose proof there, but.
The easement was largely called up the Andersons' property lines.
Yeah, our goal is to keep it within non-public realm, I guess. So Andersons working with us on the, the most cost-effective pathway to get across them. They want, they want the utility as well, right? So they've expressed it. So I think they're going to be willing partners and making that pathway. To your point, I think when we looked at the pathway, we didn't want to cross the rail twice because that costs a whole bunch of money dealing with the rail. And so, yeah, I think we've got a good pathway now that's the most cost-effective and, and it's utilizing current property owners that are, are wanting to participate. So that, that's a fair question. We, we've really looked at that.
And I think there's a lot of concerns that people's calls. I'm, I'm not going to make a decision on this today because I want to recontact those people and give them the information that you gave me. And then if they have more questions I can answer, I'm going to refer them to you. Is that fair enough?
Absolutely. I get a question. Are these the only parcels that are affected?
I believe that's, I'm not sure which of those we're looking at, because that's the northeast allocation area.
Yes.
Exhibit C is.
Okay. I'd like to have a copy of this exhibit C.
Right, so here's, here's, here's the resolution and all the exhibits that would be attached to the resolution that you would.
We'll give you a copy of that.
So we have a bunch of.
This is only the two cases. That's the whole resolution with those exhibits.
Make sure that's the biggest version of the resolution.
So this is your.
There are more.
This is your resolution version.
Yeah, I just sent to you last week.
The parcels are the same, so we have parcel this is.
Exhibit B and.
Exhibit B relates to the rest of our, you know, like development area. There are some parcels for not-for-profits and things of that sort. But we're taking all, this is the main list here. So the ones that are getting added in will be C.
Okay. Which will be included in our resolution, right?
That, that is a copy of your.
First to get attached to it. I did have that.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that's the last time we did leave the list.
You would have exhibit A and B attached.
I regret one, give one. This is that we can rescind? Am I reading that right? So if they're doing something we don't like, we can rescind this resolution?
Not, no, not effectively.
Not once there is a bond.
If there is, if there's debt on, if there's, if there's debt, you cannot do that. But let's say nothing happens, effective.
Yeah, typically, that's our.
You're assuming that.
Right, assuming this is going forward. Well, that was, that is written on my.
Right. And I, the way it was explained to us, Steve, is that if no development occurs and there's no, you know, TIP on, say, 10, 15 years from now, then it can be rescinded. But if, if it, you know.
But you're not going to start receiving any money from this until after development starts? Are you going to start receiving before we even progress?
We don't receive anything. The, the way that the TIP works is that, you know, the existing assessed value is the base. And that base continues to go to the underlying taxing unit. So it'll continue to go to the county. And then only if there's development, that increase in assessed value is what would flow into the Delphi.
Because, I mean, if we would sign that give and receive, if nothing happens for years and you're collecting money.
No, we wouldn't be collecting anything until, until.
You, you get, you get the baseline assessed value. If we complete this process, you would get, you would get the 2022's baseline assessed value forever.
So that amount locks in or what?
That, that amount locks in. You will never lose the base. Anything that's still on top of that, if there's a TIP area, those taxes will go to them.
My question about that is, if I own a proper, a piece of property, I know that the property taxes are going to gradually go up on that property. It's a value, right? But we're locking it in down here, right?
No.
No?
No, it can be.
I mean, the, the assessed value on the land goes up, you still get those taxes.
And you'll get the increase.
You get the increase.
But you don't get the increase on building and improvements.
Right, because that is not there now. So it would not be there unless we're able to run water and sewer to those properties and gas and electric. So it's all of those, you know, it's sort of the butt for, but for the TIP and the ability to bond and get the infrastructure to this site, there would be no development. So that underlying base remains the same. Should that development not occur 10 years from now, there's no debt, no bond, then at that point, if the county decided, hey, you know, we want to rescind it, they could as long as there has not been any bond. Once there's a bond and debt, then it can't be rescinded.
But we would be disappointed if there's no development in here.
The city's kind of hanging out there for a while, aren't they? While it's, I mean, you've got, you've got, you don't get any money out of it until that building's sitting out there, right?
That's correct.
Between you and you got to run the water or you don't get the building.
But in this case, it's, again, it's the Delphi redevelopment commission that is taking on that bond, right? So the city can, with the reserves and, you know, the properties that we have, we can back that bond until that TIP revenue starts coming in. But realize there will be no bonding until we're sure that there's going to be development there. So.
And then we already, we, we already are getting money into the TIP. We've been spending it mostly on building the foundation for the future.
So there is collection within the current Delphi TIP. It's been relatively small because, you know, we've had, like a negative value that, that occurred shortly after the TIP was, was.
Is there any way possible that this would fall on the state of Delphi's residents? If for some reason Jake can support that bond?
Again, the, the, the chances of that happening, Steve, would be really miniscule because, as Jake was pointing out, the value of what we need to put in the, the land to get that infrastructure there is much less than the planned development for improvements in that area.
And another one of those questions is that people from, talking to area worrying about for water bill going up higher than what it has here in town, which I understand that has to go up some to keep things up to date and running.
The water bill has already gone up, the steps that were projected for that thirteen and a half ninety dollar expansion that took place. What this will do is actually give us more ratepayers. So it will help to ensure that we don't have to increase water rates, you know, except for slight inflationary.
Yeah, we're, the goal, a couple of things. One is that I wouldn't encourage communities to invest pipes to nowhere. I really think that this is a scenario where nothing goes in the ground, no bond gets issued unless there's a project. And then the math has to work before I would advise the city of Delphi or the county to do anything, like we're going to take the assessed value of that project and I'm going to run the numbers and say, city of Delphi, I really think you can support this infrastructure expansion, this is, this is what we need to be doing. And then we work with the company to, to roll that out. Two, for us, this is about year '26 or '27. So this is when TIP goes away, this, 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 this item that we have to use. Because after the TIP's gone, all local units of governments now see that assessed value, so.
Wait a minute, run that past me again, I'm going to go over that.
Yeah, so TIP, TIP is a function to use to borrow future tax revenue. But our goal as Economic Development Corporation is to kind of look at the long term of year '26, '27. Corporation is to kind of look at the long term of year twenty-six, twenty-seven, once the bond, if there was a bond issued and the TIF goes away. And then at that point, the local units of government would then, would then be the recipients of that increased data.
In other words, once you bond, there's a twenty-five-year life of the TIF. So after that twenty-five-year period, all of that assessed value goes to the.
Back to the under of the unit being mostly the county.
Oh, it's like a school.
Correct.
Sure.
Correct.
A good addition there, so.
Right.
But, but yes, it does, once that twenty-five-year lifespan, so you, you pass this next meeting, say, so the timeline doesn't start on that TIF until we actually bond. So say we bond next year, then that starts the time clock. And then twenty-five years from that start date, the TIF ends. So by then, all infrastructure that we've run to that area would have been paid for, and the, the, all the assessed value then, the taxes from that goes back to the baseline. You continue to get throughout the life of the TIF, the base that was there prior to any development.
I understand a little bit more now?
Yes.
I have a question about the Andersons. What happens, you're, so you're not going, you wouldn't TIF until there's a bond? Is that what I just understood you saying? No, okay. Would you TIF the Andersons right away?
We would establish a Delphi Redevelopment Commission, TIF area, allocation area. So that TIF is then established.
Okay, so then what happens with the Andersons who have gotten a tax abatement for property taxes for, well, I think ever since I've, I've written for the Comet?
They get it every year, every time?
Yeah, so who?
The Andersons do not want an abatement, right?
You don't, they don't?
I believe so. I think that one has.
I think we did on the new bench that, when I was on set on council for fifteen years.
And then what is the, what is, is that part of the base? Is, are the buildings part of the base for?
The Andersons, anything that is their current assessed value is the base.
So if they would add on in the future?
Yes, it's just what they would add on that would be part of the allocation area for the Delphi redevelopment.
My apologies, I'm not going to vote on this today.
Oh, no, that's fine.
And has the Andersons ever come in and asked for you to run water out to them? Just wondering.
I, I mean, they're not going to come to the county. I mean, they would go to the city, they would come to the city to ask, and, and because we work on contract on behalf of the city of Delphi, yes, we've spoken with the Andersons, and they've asked that the utility services be ran to their, so the answer to that is yes, via the EDC, which I think is rightfully so. Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would, yes.
I was just saying, I don't think we've gotten one anywhere in the board.
You probably don't want one.
So we really appreciate your time, and if you have questions that you'd like to ask us in the meantime, otherwise, we'll plan to be back at your next meeting, if that's okay. Thank you so much.
And Ted has the resolution in proper form for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, can I, can I say in the article that the plan is to vote on this on the sixth, so people know?
I suppose there could be a reason that could come up and we have to postpone it one more time. So we're planning on going on.
Okay, thank you.
So with the elevator upgrade, they have completed the phase two, they're moving on, wait for phase three. In the midst of all this, Tyson Corp, nor myself, had an idea that the current fire alarm system that we have is out of date and not re-cooked ever. They, with that kind of being blindsided on it, Corson brought in their engineers and a couple of other people to kind of see if what we currently have could be compatible with the new elevator system, if it could be coexist with, you know, the newer technology and stuff like that. It does not. They were trying to find initially something, because based on the fire code, it's all based on occupancy of room size, closet, and based on this one. The pool stations, which is basically, we go up and pull it down for fire, has to be on every exit staircase. As you can see in the estimate, kind of gives the figures for, like, the sixty-three strobe lights and stuff like that. This is the bare minimum requirements to re-code for this facility. That would be like sixty-three strobes, some of them orange, some of them white. We've got the horn strobe, which those would be, of course, outside the offices. Everything, this system here, initially what they were going to propose me was, because this was not even a thought yet, is this system here that you're looking at the estimates completely wireless. The only wire would be the control panel, which would be down in the basement, which would replace our existing one now. Everything else would be completely wireless. They didn't even know Honeywell, it's a Honeywell system. Yeah.
They have their battery in every one of these?
Yeah, so we, we kind of do the same thing now. When they start chirping, we've got to replace the batteries currently now. So it's kind of like the same lines and stuff, system that we currently have. Yeah, they just, they brought in a first estimate, and it was pulling wires because they had to run all new wires and everything else, and they had to run wires across the retunda and everything else just to hook up stuff. And luckily, Honeywell came out with a new system that is UL rated, where these are not. So it's one-hundred percent backed. And from the first estimate, this one says about seventy-five thousand dollars.
So how much?
About seventy-five thousand dollars.
So the sixty-eight, seven-fifty of the estimate?
Yes.
Can you put that in your budget for next year?
No. Okay, backing up. Hugh Cap has sixty thousand for this year that we're going to use for phase three. He wants to use that, and the remainder will come out of his budget, and then he could hand sixty thousand for next year for the phase three.
Because they cannot move to phase three until this is done and inspected, before they can even redo phase three, which is the control panel. So.
I'm kind of curious, but that's very different.
I mean, I had it in the back of my mind, but I didn't think that that would play a role, which now, since, you know, looking at hospitals and other government facilities, you kind of see that strobe lights are outside the elevators and stuff like that, so.
They didn't bring it up before we started on these cases.
That's right, yeah.
Same point is, we did not know that.
Nor did Tyson Corp.
But, you know, did the elevator.
It's not good to, we don't have the choice.
And from the way, I've asked around about different companies, there's, Corson's kind of got, there's not really that, there's not many other companies that even provide a service, like Corson in this area, that would get, even give me an estimate.
Where do you have one?
They got one, their main branch is Indianapolis, but they got like an office there in Kokomo. I believe that's where the guy comes, Service Tech, like they have a service center there in Kokomo.
How about AESO?
AESO's fire extinguisher.
When would they start this, if it's approved?
Well, talking about that, we've been trying to kind of push them to see if they can get started this year. They're just doing everything they can, trying to get ahold of the vendors and stuff like that, to see if they get everything in. Everything's just supply and demand, and if they have the parts in. They do plan on starting this year, and at least getting the parts in and stuff like that, because they can't really start the labor. They don't want to, you know, shut off the elevator, close it down, because, you know, they only have half the parts. So they are in the middle of ordering the parts in and getting everything set up and getting things ready and in place to go.
And if we have a bill, and they can't get the work all completed by January, they would be paying for the parts and things like that.
Can you put the other three thousand dollars in your budget?
Yeah, I currently have it there now.
And you can cover that too?
So you're putting off phase three in the air of the elevator.
We don't have a choice.
Yeah, we don't have a choice because it's not a code, they won't do it just as a code.
It's not permitted to have it retested, but it was put on hold because the alarm, the fire system was not up hard yet, so. Tyson Corp can't move forward until the alarm system is up code.
That's the new stuff in the elevator, and one's about to go.
And which wouldn't be a bad idea to update the alarm system in the courthouse anyway, because it is means of safety, again, for the employees.
Basically, there would be a pool station, top of every staircase, in the courthouse. The goal is, is they want people to get away, and that's a great idea, and come a way down, pull the pool station, since it sets off the strobe, everybody knows. Better notification, better communication on the system. And not all the false calls that we've had in the past few years.
So what we would do, we're just recommend that the council.
They use the.
They use the backup, the backup, that's right.
What did you say?
God, do you have an opinion on this? Do you have a?
It's going to be a problem. What did you say?
It's going to hold that high?
What did you say?
That we have, we would just ask you to say, pending council approval.
No, you have that money in your budget for this year, sixty thousand.
So it won't have to be approved?
It doesn't have to be approved by the council.
Okay. And this is the only people around that would give an estimate, unless you go out of state. Then you've got travel time and all that.
Maybe you want to do something like that.
Month will make a motion.
How much is the goal year later?
Sixty-eight. Sixty-eight. And they added, of course, they added a little bit for inflation, but if they get started this year, get all the parts and stuff in, that won't be a concern anyway. Because after the passing sixty thousand, which are approved, and covering the rest of it, hopefully cover this part of it. The only part other additional would be going back to the council for the approval for the phase three.
And if you can't do that, you have money to transfer, and that would have to go to the council, that we do have money, and then have to get the transfer.
We have fifty, let's count that. So you just said?
Sixty.
Sixty.
And so he's giving them a three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Which he says he has now.
This year.
But it could be encumbered. So I think we, we got it covered, and we can't get phase three done until this is done. So the elevator's on a standstill, and we're still not in code with that, so.
They won't do phase three until this is done, and that will be next year, because that's the money.
Yeah, because Tyson Corp, they're almost have all the stuff ready to go for the opening, just waiting on the fire company.
So your motion is launch you to install the new fire system?
They got a question. Will this, have a new fire system installed? Would that affect our insurance rates as well as possible out there?
Check.
If I?
It's something to consider.
So I have a motion and a second to revive this fire system. All the favors say aye.
Aye. Thank you for the good news, Keith. Always good news. Have you had any luck with the drywall yet?
You mean the blaster?
Yeah.